The special meeting of the Annapolis City Council on Monday, February twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-one will be called to order at seven P M. At this time, would everyone join us in the invocation with Alderman Gay, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you. First, I'd like to start with a moment of silence in recognition of the five hundred thousand that we've lost to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Thank you, and please keep your heads bowed for breath. Dear Lord, we're grateful for this moment to be gathered here. We're grateful to be breathing as we've just taken a moment of silence to recognize five hundred thousand individuals who've lost their lives to this disease, to this virus. Lord God, we ask that you cover our families in your blood, Lord God. We ask that you cover each of us in your blood and protect us, Lord Jesus, as we go out to serve in the public, Lord God, and hopeful during the work that is blessed and ordained by you, Lord Jesus. Well, God, we ask that you cover our families as they support us in this work, you know, daily to and fro, Lord Jesus. We ask that you cover the staff in the city of Annapolis as they continue to work throughout this virus, in this pandemic. We ask that you cover our firefighters and our police officers, first responders, as they're dealing daily with the chaos in the streets, that we ask that you also settle the chaos in the streets and in our communities, Lord God, and provide opportunities and resources for others in our city. Lord God, we ask that you cover the city of Annapolis, Lord God, and that you put us on the right track, Lord God, that you put us on the path that you want us to be on, Lord God. Lord God, we are so grateful again for the chance and opportunity to be alive and well and breathing, and for that, we are forever grateful, and say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Can we have another prayer for the city after that?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley? Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Tierney?
Here.
Alderman Payon?
Here.
Alderman Pendell-Chauncey?
Here.
Alderman Finlayson?
Present.
Alderman Shandemeyer?
Present.
Alderman Gay?
Present.
Alderman Savage?
Present.
Alderman Arnold?
Present.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
This time I intend to attain a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add number one, legislative action, second reader of O dash two dash twenty-two, city council meeting agenda to be added as second reader per Alderman Savage, thank you. And then number two, a business and miscellaneous item, a section to allow for a proposed closed session in accordance with the annotated code of Maryland General Provision Article three dash three oh five B seven, disclosure of the topic discussed for citation, legal briefing by council. Could I get a motion?
Mister Mayor, I would also like to add O three twenty-one on second reader.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All those, Alderman Gay, discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I had a question in clarification from the city clerk. I, um, for the cannabis dispensary ordinance, we had accepted public testimony from it, but it's not listed here, as I was told that it had been moved to the planning commission. I just wanted to, you know, see how accurate that is and then get a data clarification for the actual agenda.
Regina?
Actually, the public testimony forms that we received for O four, the, um, your legislation, they are listed under general public. Their names will be, the mayor will read those into the record.
Okay, so will it be at the next meeting then?
I'm not sure. Mister Lyles will probably have to answer that because he and Jacqueline set the agenda. I don't know.
Okay, no problem.
Mr. City Attorney, is that?
Yeah, it'll be at the next, the next meeting.
Mister Mayor? On that, I think Alderman Gay is asking when, so that legislation is going to the planning commission. Does that mean the planning commission is meeting before our next meeting? Because I think it has to go, I guess the clarification is, does it have to go to the planning commission and do we have to wait for their findings before it comes back to us for public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, and so do we, do we have a date on when it goes to the planning commission?
I do not. I just saw it today that it needed to go there, as of last meeting, rather. So I don't know the date of the plan, the next planning commission meeting. We can figure all that out and send an email out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor with a show of hands, say aye, aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is ceremonial items, beginning with I D four twenty-one, city council citation to Miss Phyllis Gray.
All right, this is a great moment. I think Alderman Ronda Pendell-Chauncey has, uh, would really enjoy making this presentation. Am I right, Ronda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Julian?
All right.
We pulling people up here?
Yeah, I don't see Miss Phyllis's face.
Hey, hey, Miss Phyllis.
Hey, hey, Miss Phyllis.
Hi, Miss Phyllis. This is indeed a special day. The City of Annapolis City Council Citation awarded to Miss Phyllis Gray. On behalf of the residents of the City of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you the city council citation in grateful and heartfelt recognition and appreciation for your outstanding service as the resident service coordinator over five years in Annapolis, initially in the Annapolis Gardens community and now in the Bay Ridge Gardens community. We are grateful for your outstanding and unwavering support of our Annapolis families, always going above and beyond the call of duty. You continue to receive heartfelt thank yous from not only the families that you serve, but also from community members and city leadership. You have been a true blessing, a gem and a jewel to Annapolis. We love you for what you continue to do for all of us each and every day. Keep up your great work, keep the faith and Godspeed. Given under our hands and the great seal of the City of Annapolis, this twenty-second day of February, two thousand and twenty, signed by our honorable mayor as well as our honorable alderpersons. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Miss Phyllis. Have you got some words for us?
Um, I just want to say that I'm very grateful. It's such an honor to do this. I love doing what I do. And, uh, you know, I'm from Washington, D.C., but I've grown to love Annapolis. It was a new place for me. It was, you know, getting to know a lot of new people in the area, and I'm very appreciative of this citation. And I pray that I can continue to live up to this expectation of you all. I do try my best. And I'm just thankful, and I'm thankful. That's it.
I just like to make a point that your residence has gone the extra mile for its residents in getting the vaccine to, to people who maybe not have the same mobility as other people, the same, uh, resources that other people have. So we truly appreciate that, all of you that are on the call now. Thank you for what you're doing over there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a blessing.
And Miss Phyllis does have her citation in her hand, so.
I do. I do. I haven't got my brain yet, but I'm gonna get that so I can put it in the office.
But thank you again, Miss Phyllis. You're jamming a jewel. We really do appreciate it. As I said, I wish we could clone you. But thank you so much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you all. Okay, Mister City Attorney, next item on the agenda, please.
Yes, next item is I D five twenty-one, city council citations, U.S. Naval Academy Midshipman Honoring Black History Month.
Okay, so if we could bring up wonderful midshipmen and women, how, how am I supposed to say that? Right. Everybody on board. Thank you all for being here. We are very proud of you all. Thank you for giving your time. I know you're all, all very busy, but we are so lucky to have such amazing people coming to school in this college and, and leadership like you guys present. We have got citations for everybody that is here. You will all be getting them individually. I've got them kind of little summary here. So I will just do the summary on behalf of the residents of the City of Annapolis. We are pleased to confer upon you this city council citation in recognition of your outstanding leadership as the midshipman of the United States Naval Academy and leaders of the Annapolis community. As the Brigade Dignity and Respect Officer, now who is, who am I, who's the dignity and respect officer? Thank you. Thank you, Melon. You oversee diversity initiatives, an ability created to execute on and issue a paramount of issues of paramount importance. Dignity and respect is the key to growth, education and maturity of your fellow midshipmen. It is also paramount in our ability to improve and move forward as a society. We thank you for you, for your work and dedication. We are proud of your accomplishments and proud to have you as a member of our community. We wish you every success in your very bright future. Congratulations. Now, we could only read one of the citations. We, we chose, uh, off, uh, Melon, are you an officer? Sorry.
No, sir, just a midshipman.
Midshipman, sorry about that. But we do have citations also for Sidney Barber is the Brigade's first black female commander. If you could just raise your hand as you, as I, thank you. Barnave Segay, the fifth battalion commander, thank you. Jonathan Lee, second regiment commander. Syla Hannabel, second regiment executive officer. The United States Naval Academy has, for the first time in its history, an all-black executive board of the student council. They are President Kena Pierce, Grant Booker is vice president, Zeon Armstrong is the treasurer, and Jacoby Rice is the secretary. Can we get a big round of applause for everybody that's on the call today? And thank you so much. And I'm not sure who would like to speak for you, but we, we certainly are proud that you are here today.
Yes, sir. I can speak just some brief words. Thank you so much for having us and taking the time to recognize some of these accomplishments and some of the things that we're doing here at the school. We really do appreciate it. So thank you.
And thank you all for those short words. Thank you. Well, we really, really appreciate you all being on. Thank you all again. And we will see you downtown. Mister City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is I D six twenty-one, city council citation, Temple Cone Poet Laureate for the City of Annapolis.
Temple coming up?
Yes, sir. I'm right here.
And I'm not sure if Genevieve is here from Art in Public Places. If she is not, I will go ahead. I love the last poems that were published of yours in the paper, Temple.
Yes, sir.
I do not have your citation in front of me here. Hold on one second. Bear with me. Yes, here we go. Thank you. So Temple, first of all, thank you for what you, you were our poet laureate through some amazing events that this city never thought that they, they would be confronting. You did it with such grace. You had such beautiful words. Thank you for, for that. And we, you've left some big shoes to fill. So, but on behalf of the residents of the City of Annapolis, and I wish I could do this in rhyme or something like that, but I, we are pleased to confer upon you the city council citation in recognition of your service to the City of Annapolis as poet laureate. We thank you for serving in the role as the official poetry representative of the City of Annapolis and for your work promoting an appreciation for poetry among our residents. Following in the great traditions of poet laureates that began in nineteen thirty-seven, when the Library of Congress selected Joseph Oslander as the first United States poet laureate. You have helped us to begin a new tradition in Annapolis, serving in the role for our city from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty. Together with members of the Art in Public Places Commission and the residents of the City of Annapolis, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you, Temple. And if you had a couple of words, we would really appreciate it.
You know what? And I, I will not break out my new epic poem, but, but I will give you, I did want to share just a few words of poetry to, to echo Alderman Gay's prayer. And this is a poem, and it's quite a brief one there, so you needn't worry, but it's called "A Closer Absence." There's got to be a word for this longing that kneels beside you in an empty chapel or follows you beneath bare trees, a word inflected with pulse and hand clasp and breath. You would need a thousand tongues just to speak it, unless you found you were one of the tongues and the word was being spoken through you, was you. Thank you all very much.
I truly appreciate it, Temple. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mister City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item is appointments, beginning with A P two twenty-one, the appointment of Kathy Ebner to the Affordable Housing and Community Equity Development Commission.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to approve A P two dash twenty-one?
So moved.
Moved. Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Finlayson? No, was that a second?
Alderman? Yeah, I know Ms. Ebner, and she is a terrific find for us. She's not only delightful, but is extremely knowledgeable about housing affairs. I understand that she has spoken with my colleague, Alder, Alderman Gay, Gray, excuse me, Gay, and she's a, she's a terrific addition, I think.
Thank you. Alderman Finlayson?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. I echo what Alderman Payon has just said. Ms. Ebner served us on the Spar Road Forest Drive Task Force and was an excellent member and a vital voice in that discussion. And so she will serve the Housing Committee well, so, you know, best choice around, so thank you.
Okay, glad we could make this appointment. All those in favor with a show of hands, say aye, aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. Thank you. Sebner? Okay, Mister City Attorney?
I put both hands up.
I think we've got a few to do, so Mister City Attorney, next item on the agenda?
Yes, sir. The next item is appointment of Grace Matthews to the Education Committee, A P three twenty-one.
Do I get a motion to approve A P three dash twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Another great find. Alderman Finlayson, Alderman Finlayson?
Yeah, you're right, Mister Mayor. Another great find. Ms. Matthews has been on our waiting list for probably two years to serve on this committee. So her patience speaks for itself as a high school teacher and counselor, and the Education Commission is excited and eager for her to join us, so absolutely.
Thank you. Alderman Pendell-Chauncey?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'll make one state. Ms. Matthews has known me before I was born.
That just means, oh.
Okay, on that, all those in favor with a show of hands, say aye, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you all. Thank you. Mister City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, the next item is A P four dash twenty-one, another appointment. This is of India Oaks to the Education Commission.
Okay.
Oaks.
Got an awesome threesome here. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any nice word? Any?
Another great win.
Okay, Alderman Shandemeyer?
Yes, Ms. Oaks has been a fantastic advocate for our children's education, and she will be a wonderful addition to this committee. She is driven, passionate, and she has my full support.
Thank you. Alderman Pendell-Chauncey and Alderman Payon?
I'll echo exactly what Mister, what Alderman Shandemeyer said. Ms. Oaks is a welcome addition to this commission. Thank you.
Alderman Payon?
I echo what my two colleagues said, but in addition to that, and perhaps more importantly, she's one of Mrs. Payon's guaranteed products from Hillsborough Elementary School.
All right. Okay, all those in favor with a show of hands, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Ayes have it. All right, welcome aboard, everybody. Thank you for your service. We truly appreciate you. Mister City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, the night, next item is petition reports and communications, starting with update from the mayor.
So, good evening. Later this week, we will have an event at Waterworks Park celebrating that Recreation and Parks Director Archie Trader, City Manager David Gerald, and I will be receiving on behalf of the city and residents, the Land Manager of the Year Award from the Mid-Atlantic Off-Road Enthusiasts, or the Moore Group. The city, the city owns a six-hundred-acre park on Defense Highway, Waterworks Park. Back in the nineteen twenties, the water in that reservoir, essentially stormwater runoff, was used as the city drinking water. The reservoir, reservoir was retired when we tapped the underground aquifers for city drinking water a century ago. But the park is beautifully understood, a beautifully understood parcel that is in the city's portfolio. A few years ago, we opened a solar park, generating electricity on what was once the city dump, finding a great use for what is known as a brown field. But the rest of the park is relatively undisturbed. We let the Moore Volunteers come in and make hiker and biker trails that I've taken a few of you all on and hurt some of you. I apologize for that. And they are now open to the public. You can access it off Housley Road or Defense Highway. As we work towards a plan for a makerspace, we will also be working on parking at the site. But you can ride or hike to find eleven miles of trails, and I encourage all you folks to get out there and try that when it thaws out a little bit. It's probably a little slippery today. You can find more information on the Recreation and Parks website under Waterworks Park or on the Moore website, also using the keywords Waterworks Park. This kind of public-private partner, a nonprofit partnership, they take time to nurture, but when they pay off, they pay off big. I'm happy to deliver this to the residents with no taxpayer funding. Last week, we had the privilege of swearing in Stanley Branford to become our deputy police chief. We had a brief and socially distant swearing-in ceremony at city council chambers with his immediate family and Chief Ed Jackson. We are moving in a new direction with A P D. We all know this is a tough time for the police department, for police departments across the country with a new set of unique challenges for our time. But I know in Annapolis, we have a forward-looking team and are fortunate to have the experience and expertise we have found in Chief Jackson and Deputy Chief Branford and the team they are putting in place. In celebration of Black History Month, I hope you've all enjoyed seeing the flags of the African diaspora in downtown and the daily social media posts highlighting our leading ladies of black history here in Annapolis, including Alderman Sheila Finlayson and Alderman Ronda Pendell-Chauncey. Tune in this Saturday for a Facebook Live event at five P M. Called Lift Every Voice, a virtual Black History Month celebrating its partnerships, its partnership with Grand Mia's Touch. We are coming up on a year of COVID in Annapolis. On March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, we declared our state of emergency and shut the doors of City Hall to the public. And what a year it has been. On March sixteenth of this year at six P M., we will host a virtual town hall with Dr. Niles Callejano-Raman and O E M Director Kevin Simmons. We will take a look back at where we have been, what our residents and city staff have been through, and we'll talk about where we go from here. You can tune in on the City of Annapolis TV, Facebook and YouTube. That's Tuesday, March sixteenth at six P M. I hope you'll all join us. One of the things I'm proud of in my office is our health equity work in the city during COVID. We share a health department with the county, and we are sometimes at their mercy for initiatives that help us reach into vulnerable communities. Last year in June, we hired a new Hispanic community liaison in my office, Laura Gutierrez. By late summer, Laura is putting together a pilot program that would essentially tackle two problems. One, a very high case rate in the Annapolis Latino community, nearly seventy percent. Two, an issue of brain waste with roughly thirty-five thousand immigrants in Maryland with healthcare-related degrees. with healthcare-related degrees in their home country being meaningful and not utilized. Laura believed that we could put some CARES funding towards hiring a small group of community health promoters, that we could drive that case rate down and slow the spread in a community that often lives in the shadows while putting and putting their expertise to use. After securing funding, she hired a team, four promoters and a coordinator. These were nurses and doctors and other healthcare professionals who were not working in their chosen fields, but who could navigate the medical issues, the science, and who could have had the necessary language skills to reach deep into the Hispanic community. They conducted a needs assessment survey where they went to food drives, to apartment complexes, to places like Home Depot parking lot to hand out PPE and ask people to take the survey. With those results, they learned that the best way to reach people on a regular basis was through a texting app. They signed up 750 families, with each family averaging at least four members who they regularly text updates to. They sent 52 messages in the past four months. They inform on testing, vaccinations, myth-busting, food resources, rental and utility assistance, and much more. So, hold on to your virtual seats to hear there's more achievements. They have pre-registered 160 people for vaccines. They have given out more than 3,000 PPE resources kits that includes things like masks, hand sanitizer, and laundry detergent. They have delivered business PPE kits to 60 businesses. They hung more than 300 mask requires signs in Spanish. They have helped our Hispanic community with nearly 3,000 flu shots. These are all significant benchmarks and accomplishments, but they've also driven the case rate in Annapolis Hispanic community sharply down. And we all understand that COVID is the big equalizer. If we don't fix it for everybody, we don't fix it for anybody. So, we have to make sure that we take care of our entire community. They drove it down from a monthly case rate of nearly 40, a case rate of nearly 40% over the summer to 10.5% in the last data that the county health department delivered today. That means the average case rate went from 67.3% overall to 36.3%. Looking macro or micro, that's an astonishing bend in the curve, and the team has used the science and the data to show that what we're doing is working. And we are just proud internally. Laura's team is getting outside attention for her work. The City of Annapolis is recognized from agencies, including the county's Department of Health, the State Department of Health, and even the CDC. Annapolis now has a seat at the table in the health equity discussions on Maryland's Mass Vaccination Community Outreach Committee. She's presented to the Latino Caucus in the Maryland General Assembly. The county has had her sit in in no fewer than eight panels and Facebook Live events. Maryland nonprofits, Anne Rundle Giving, and the CDC Foundation are all asking Annapolis, what are you doing right? She even had a health coordinator, Alexa Moran, a medical doctor from Ecuador, hired out from underneath her group by Luminous Healthcare and Rundle Medical Center because they understood the need to work within the Hispanic community. This isn't all we've done in Annapolis, but I wanted to highlight those accomplishments from Laura. The City Office of Emergency Management is partnering with Luminous Healthcare to host pop-up vaccination clinics to our most vulnerable and underrepresented seniors. Many of our elderly residents in low-income senior housing are at a disadvantage in their efforts to register for COVID-19 vaccinations because some don't have access to the technology to sign up. In addition, transportation can pose a challenge because the Department of Health is not hosting any vaccination clinics inside the city. But we hope to change that. OEM and Luminous bring the vaccination clinics directly to the seniors where they live. So far, seniors at Bowman Place, Morris Blum, and Bloomsbury Square have been vaccinated. Moving forward, OEM plans to expand similar clinics as the vaccine supply becomes more widely available. In other partnerships on vaccine, Bay Ridge Gardens Management worked with local pharmacies to stand up vaccine clinics on-site for residents. I know Alderman Gay was part of that, and I want to thank you for that. We will get to the other side of COVID because of all these kind of relationships that we are all forming. Over at Annapolis Fire, Chief Doug Romelli asked me to highlight some promotions in the department. Firefighter First Class Jonathan Crisman, a 12-year veteran of the department, was promoted to Lieutenant. Lieutenant Crisman has been assigned as EMS Supervisor Safety Officer. Firefighter First Class Kenneth White, also a 12-year veteran of APD, was also promoted to Lieutenant. Lieutenant White is in the Fire Marshal's Office. Three firefighters, firefighter threes, have been promoted to firefighters first class. All are in operations. Brock Hunt, who has been with the AFD for four years, Jonathan Riff, also a four-year veteran, and Barbara Ann Youngs, 11-year veteran. Congratulations to all our Annapolis Fire Department professionals and staff who have maintained high standards for our community and a top tier of service for our residents. Do a little round of applause for those guys. Rich, right? I also want to thank Ida Young and Brian Pakwin and the team from MIT for rolling out our new city website. It has enhanced navigation, helps us resolve American with Disabilities Act compliance issues that we had, and it is a beautiful design. It is all part of our contract. So, again, no taxpayer money was spent directly on this. I know that most of the council members, and certainly members of my staff, have heard constituents that the city isn't doing enough or moving fast enough on water access. Let me just take a few seconds to highlight progresses we have made in the past three years. Truxton Boat Ramp Parking Lot will be upgraded to provide easier access and fix traffic flow issues. Tucker Street Boat Ramp will provide easier water access by installing a slatted concrete boat ramp, an adjacent finger pier, which, and a small craft racks for use by city residents. Conduit Street, adding a floating dock. Amos Garrett Street, a water access will be upgraded. Thompson Street will remove a dilapidated pier and add a floating dock. Chesterton Ave will replace the bulkhead and add a floating dock plus enhance the existing submerged gravel wetland and replant native species. Sixth Street will explore dredging options, install a gangway and a floating pier. Hawkins Cove, in a community partnership with the housing authority to provide water access, stop erosion and pollution, and create a usable community space. We recently completed a community survey and held community meetings to crowdsource neighborhood ideas for the site. Robert E's Park at Clay Street on College Creek is in the planning stages. But the initial outlook is to create a community space and add a walkway and dock for easy water access. Waterworks Park, also, as we previously mentioned. Back Creek Nature Park, we worked with the Maryland DNR and the Annapolis Maritime Museum to improve water quality, provide environmental education, capture stormwater, reduce flooding, and spur ecological recovery. Annapolis Adaptive Boating Center, at the total cost of 2.25 million, we purchased the Port Williams Marina for Chesapeake Region Accessible Boating or Crab. Truxton Park Pool, that isn't a natural body of water, but it's water that families can play in that opened in the middle of a pandemic. In July of 2020, it costs $4.5 million. I look forward to the summer at the pool. I just noticed that Reckon Park is beginning the search for summer lifeguards and pool managers. Cars Beach, an historic site in our city, a place where a generation of African-American families were relegated for their summer beach fund due to segregation. We have a plan to provide access at that site, and we are working toward a plan that will bring additional amenities. We have a living shoreline project on Lafayette Street. We have made significant improvements at Ellen Moyer Park. We subsidize and support helping expanding the wonderful education access opportunities provided by the Maritime Museum. We've had numerous camps through Recreation and Parks, Annapolis Police, and pop-up camps in partnership with Hacker and Annapolis Waterfront and Sailing Center. They got kids out on the water sailing and paddle boarding. We are taking meetings with the state and the Department of Defense on creating a gateway paddle park into the City of Annapolis. We will have water access in the South Annapolis Yacht Center, I promise you, and at Wells Cove, where the condominium community has existed since the 1980s. Without resolution on this issue, I might add, Alderman, Annette, and I are working toward a solution. I first visited the site for the first time in my life in October 20 last year, and I've been working on it since. In November, we surveyed it. In January, we began working on obtaining a program open space funding. We are currently in the process of negotiating the easement. We are taking a step-by-step approach to ensure that the law is followed, the code is adhered to, and we consider everyone's interest. Every single day, myself and this council work on toward a common goal, to enhance quality of life, bring water access to residents, and improve our city amenities. Thank you for letting me say that. And, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item is reports by committees.
Alderman Savage.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to give a special update from the previous Environmental Matters Committee meeting, where we had a representative from, Ms. Joanna Augburn, from the Annapolis Conservancy Board. She's the chair, as well as Sean Opler with our wonderful JES group and also a number of folks from our planning department. And so, the presentation was on the Annapolis Greenway Plan. And so, this plan is, it's been in the works, or talked about at least, for probably well over a decade. And the new group we have on the Conservancy Board and also with the group of employees we have, and finally, we've gotten moving on it. So, they're actually well into creating this plan, which hopefully will be included into the comp plan. And so, what the Greenway Plan is, is identifies both public and private properties where there may be, where we may be able to achieve some kind of connection between open space, between forests, and either for benefit for stormwater water quality or benefit for wildlife or also benefit for our residents in terms of having pedestrian or multi-use trails, that kind of thing. And so, once we have these properties identified, that allows the city to go forward and the Conservancy Board to go forward and have discussions with the property owners, if need be, about easements or whatnot. But in any case, make a long story short, they have put together a public portal, a map, thanks to the magic of Sean Opler. And so, anybody can go on there and fill out, look at all the properties the board has identified, but also what other people have identified. You can like them, you can comment on them, you can draw new connections. And that's something I will, I believe they sent it out to the entire council probably a few months back now, but I could certainly send that out again to the council if you'd like to chime in. I don't think it's too late to make comments on it. So, I think it's a great opportunity. So, I will, I'll make a note to send it out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Alderman Pendell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next meeting of the Public Safety Standing Committee will be held on next Monday, March 1 at 4:00 PM. Included on our agenda, we'll have a progress report regarding the lead grant and No Harm Program. Thank you. All is invited.
Alderman Gay.
Thank you. My two things. The Housing and Human Welfare Committee met on the 16th of February and basically approved all of the grants that we discussed weeks before with the Finance Committee. And so, that was done with Teresa Wellman. I was also stood up by David. And so, we are hoping to have him at our March meeting. And then, secondly, if okay with the Chairwoman of the Rules of the City Government Committee, I would like to bring a college professor from Anaroni County Community College who teaches a course in medical cannabis dispensaries and economics. He just, we talked, and I think it'd be helpful for him to give a presentation on how beneficial it could be to the city. And I think that education is needed, you know, for all of us, for all of us.
Thank you.
May I respond, Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, would you pass, Alderman Gay, would you pass his information on to Mrs. Green, please?
Absolutely, yep. Thank you.
Preparation for the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Pendell Charles, and then I'll go to Ellie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Gay, did you want that gentleman to also give a presentation before the Public Safety Standing Committee?
If you would like, is it the same? Oh, yeah, we're at the first Tuesday, right?
We're next Monday.
I'm sorry, next Monday, yeah. So, I will get that information as well to Takiya, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Terry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to just take a second and say that as far as these these street end parks in Ward 1, we're very fortunate to have them. I mean, this goes back to 300 years ago when we didn't have a bridge going over to Eastport that every parcel of land we used to kick off of and go over Spa Creek, but they've turned into parks, and I don't take that for granted at all. So, thank you for that. Transportation Committee needed, met February 11, Thursday. We had the infamous adequate facilities legislation. We had a great discussion. I thank my colleague Alderman Arnett for being there. But we did postpone because we just need to, we're almost there. And we want to see what rules says, and then it will kick back to us. And the same with the small cells, O2920. We postponed action on that until we got some feedback from rules as well. And, yeah, so, thank you.
Alderman Chanamai.
Economic Matters also heard the small cell ordinance. We postponed action until we could, one, submit an amendment noting the difference between a small cell and a wireless equipment, along with trying to find some more information on how the county came up with their fee structure so we can stay in line with what the county is doing.
Thank you. Alderman Gay.
I need one more thing. For the Housing and Task Force, if we could meet with your staff sometime this week, maybe virtually, to discuss some things for the Housing and Community Equity Development Commission, we're just trying to get some stuff off the ground.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Pendell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One other thing I forgot. The adequate public facilities will be on the public safety agenda for the purpose of keeping and stepping in line. And we're going to be more than likely, hopefully, postponing that so that we can keep it on track with all the other committees that it is part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rules of the City Government heard small cell as well as adequate facilities and postponed action. So, hopefully, at our next meeting on March 2, we'll be addressing both pieces of legislation. And I would suggest that if we're going to invite the professor in, that we may want to have a joint meeting with Public Safety so that it would make it easier for our speaker as well as our participants.
Did you say?
So, the next meeting.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry?
I said, did you say joint meeting? That's it.
I know.
You better laugh on that one.
That is what I said, yes. I'm trying to think about others. So anyway, the next, the next Rules and City Government Committee is, will adjourn on March 2nd at 4:00 PM, virtually, of course.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure we count the bodies. We have Alderman Payon, Alderman Gay, Alderman Finlayson, myself. That's four.
Alderman, it's a joint, it's a joint meeting, so it's two separate groups at the same time, so we don't have the cap on five.
Okay. I was told the last time that there was a cap, because I think it was Alderman Gay, maybe, we were going to have a joint meeting, but there seemed to be an issue. I can't remember which committee it was. But as long as there's not a cap, then I'm good.
We've done it before. I'm sure Mrs. Eldridge will help us with that.
Okay.
Thank you, Alderman Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rules Committee continues to meet bi-weekly. Our next meeting is March 3rd.
Would you remind him that he is Finance?
I'm sorry, Finance. Old habits, old habits. Sorry, and that's almost a term ago. Finance Committee continues to meet bi-weekly. Our next meeting is March 3rd. We're trying to reserve our strength to get ready for the budget.
Thank you. Well finished. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, comments by the general public.
So the list of speakers to speak on oh four twenty one.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Port of War, I think we have, we missed the Business Miscellaneous, ID 2921, or was that removed from the agenda?
No, we're not there yet.
That's after.
We're still in.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself, thank you.
Petitions, reports, and communications.
So the list of speakers for oh dash four dash twenty one, Medical Cannabis Dispensaries are one. To read into the record, Adam Kern, 407 Maryman Road, Annapolis. One in the Cage Lewis, 17 Hicks Avenue, Annapolis. Jennifer Balducci, 31 Glenn Avenue, Annapolis. Rita Dorsey Washington, 703 Newtown Drive, Annapolis. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda. Alderman Gay, before that, sorry.
Yes, I'm, as I would at a meeting in person, if we were in chamber and people came in and talked, because I've read every single public testimony that came in, as I do all, because I find them interesting. But my, my acts to the public with this legislation is to be patient and to be factual, because I think that when we tie, you know, just the marijuana or any drug to communities and automatically assume that we create crime and chaos and stuff, it just, it is stereotypical to our communities and it's hurtful, and I think we're better than that. And so I would just ask that we be factual and stay away from some of the, you know, the fear mongering in communities, because I think it could be helpful. And this is just my response to public testimony, as I would do any public testimony if we were in chamber.
Thank you. And Alderman Pindell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Gay, I would, I had a meeting with the Greater Parole Community Association a few weeks ago, and they would love to talk to you about that issue as well as a few others. So would you be willing to meet with them sometime in March? Because they, I think they've been trying to get a hold of you. I know you've been very busy, and that's what I indicated to them, but are you willing to meet with them to talk about this issue?
I would be willing to.
The fact seem to be, go ahead.
I'd be willing to meet with the, I'd like for the commission, for the commission to come before the council, as they would with any other, you know, testimony. We can have them at Public Safety or at our joint meeting and hear comments from the general public. I was just talking to David today about how that technology needs to be used more. I think that's, that'd be the best bet for us, is that we have them before the, that joint meeting, if okay with both chairs, and we discuss the legislation.
I think they would like to meet with you about some other issues as well. So that's what I, that's the message that I'm conveying from them to you.
Okay, well, if you set it up.
I'm willing to meet with any.
If you set it up, and then a week, I'll make it work, and I'll text you right now my schedule throughout the week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Good, thank you so much.
Please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is ID 2921, and I think there, we may have approved this already. I'm just checking now, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I have SA 23 dash 21 is approved on February 8th, 2021. That's what I have down as a note.
It went before housing, so.
Mr. City Manager.
It was approved at the last meeting, but Alderman Finlayson asked that be placed because there was a review of the proposed use of the funds, and that was approved as well by the Housing, Housing and Urban Development Committee.
That's right.
All taken care of?
Should be.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is public hearings, starting with oh two twenty one, City Council Meeting's agenda, for the purpose of clarifying content of City Council Meeting agendas for regular and special monthly meetings, and generally relating to monthly City Council Meeting agendas.
We have no written testimony for that, so I will declare the public hearing closed on oh dash two dash twenty one. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item I have is oh three twenty one, Port Wardens Authority for the purpose of requiring port wardens to consider public access to the harbor line from points of access to the water line as part of its license and permit approval process.
So we have a written testimony here from Gary Param at 945 Creek Drive, Annapolis. Any, so we will declare the public hearing on this closed, oh dash three dash twenty one closed. Before that, sorry, Alderman Finlayson, I did not see your hand up.
That's quite all right, Mr. Mayor, but I'd like to be listed as a sponsor on oh three, as well as on oh two twenty one.
Alderman Chaney.
Same thing. Put me as a co-sponsor to oh two twenty one and oh three twenty one, please.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is oh five twenty one, for public hearing Tucker Street Launching Facility, for the purpose of providing procedures for the use of the Tucker Street Launching Facility, providing certain definitions, establishing acceptable proofs of residency for issuance of certain permits, and providing penalties for violations.
Thank you. We have written testimony here, and I want to thank people for all their written testimony tonight, from Jay Ryan Parker, 601 Monterey Avenue, Annapolis. Rebecca Brenier, 99 Old Crossing Lane, Annapolis. Campbell Gleifer, 317 Tucker Street, Annapolis, representing the Tucker Street Landing Community Association. Marie and Tom Poda from 411 Monterey Ave. And Katie and Kevin Cook, 415 Monterey Ave. And Shane Walter Hoffa, 309 Tucker Ave, Annapolis. Thank you. That's all the written testimony I have. I declare the public hearing on oh five twenty one closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, the next item is oh six twenty one, Agency Regulations, for the purpose of establishing a procedure for the adoption of regulations by a city of Annapolis Department, Board, or Commission, requiring public notice, providing an appeal process, and generally relating to city of Annapolis regulations.
So we have no written testimony for this. I declare the public hearing oh dash six twenty one closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item is oh three, I'm sorry, R three twenty one, Council Compensation Commission Recommendations, for the purpose of receiving the recommendations of the Council Compensation Commission, and scheduling a public hearing on the recommendations of the Council Compensation Commission.
Again, we have no written testimony received.
Except for Rick Hudson.
I declare the public hearing on R dash three dash twenty one closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Legislative actions, beginning with oh two twenty one, City Council Meetings, second reader.
So a motion, oh dash two dash twenty one, on second reader.
So move.
Second. Second.
Second. Alderman Savage has a proposed amendment.
Yes, I do, and before that, just some general comments, and so I'm getting caught up here, we're just rolling along here now. So for this, this legislation, as I've indicated before, is just essentially bringing us back to the schedule we had previously, which is where we can do legislative action and public hearings at both of our monthly meetings. This current setup, you know, the idea was to try to make things a bit more efficient in the sense that we wouldn't be, we would be dealing with some of our, have a chance to deal with our legislative business earlier on in the evening, because we did have some meetings there where we were, it was getting 10, 11 at night until we got to that point. But I think through practice, you know, we've tried it, I definitely want to, I appreciate it and thank everyone for at least giving us a try, but I think it just proved to be a bit too confusing for everyone involved, not just the council, but the public as well. And also, I think with, with how it's worked out, we don't have too much time left in our last year here, especially since we're all aiming for June being the last month when we can really introduce legislation ideally. So that doesn't give us much time, so I think by, by passing this, that'll help, again, we'll be able to do more business here in our remaining time. So my intention with, with trying to get this added to the agenda here, which does require suspension of the rules, is to have to vote on it the same night as the public hearing, is just that, you know, again, I think, I'm not going to be heartbroken if we can't do this tonight, but I just thought it'd be an opportunity, especially since we have not received any public comment, that we could just move forward with it, and for the sake of efficiency and giving us the most time in our last few months here to get business done. So that's the general comments. The amendment I have just adds, yeah, okay, good, looks like it is in there. So it's Amendment One. All it does is add back, so the legislation as written only has the ceremonial items at one of the meetings, so this just basically corrects it to make sure the ceremonial items can be done at both of the meetings. That's essentially it. And then, so that's the main, one of the main changes. The second half of the change in legislation deals with the consent calendar, and I'll let Alderman Arnett speak to that.
First of all, I move Amendment One, and
Second.
It's been my observation that the consent calendar has become quite confused and at times very loaded up with things. The introduction of legislation, which I think really does deserve a public reading, it may be the only time public will get to hear that this legislation is in the offing, whether they're watching us live or they see the recording of the council meeting, or they watch it on the cable TV. There were some large dollar amounts that were going on the consent calendar, and most often, one or another of my colleagues would say that they would like to bring that off to discuss it, it was a big amount of money, and they wanted to make sure that due diligence was done. So, and then the amendment that Alderman Savage just made, I personally believe that when we get volunteers to populate our different boards and commissions and functions in the city, the least they deserve for volunteering is that we read their name aloud at a meeting rather than just pass it on the consent calendar. So for a number of reasons, I think, returning to the old way of doing business, and we're just going to have to try to figure out how to be more expeditious, I'm sure there's going to be some nights that are going to be loaded up with controversial items, and when we get vaccinated and people come back, I think people will be more likely to wander back over here to the city council, to the city hall, and speak their minds. And quite frankly, I miss that. I mean, there's nothing like watching somebody standing at the podium, you can see their expression, you can, you can hear their passion. Tonight, we had public testimony, and we just read off their names. It's just not the same. But in any event, this is, as Alderman Savage said, basically returning us back to the way we were doing business, and I think it's a good thing to do.
Alderman?
I think the consent calendar has done exactly what it was supposed to do, that is to save us time, save the public time on matters that are basically non-controversial. And I would agree with Alderman Arnett that it's not, reading the testimony is quite different from hearing it. It's much better, actually, because we have it in front of us, and we aren't often provided with a written copy of testimony, although we are sometimes. I think, you know, you want to vote, you really want to vote on some of these matters that we do routinely, one at a time, I mean, taking them all individually, going through the, you know, going over everything, reading it over, having it read over, and, you know, and during the meeting, I think that we perhaps need to limit what goes on the consent calendar. That's the far better course than to basically eliminate it. Let's talk about what ought to be on the consent calendar, as opposed to eliminating it. Nobody seems to want to make any effort to do that, and I think it would be a very fruitful experience and something I could certainly support, but I think it's silly to eliminate it. Going back to the old way, you're right, we're going back as backwards by passing this. We can always take something off of the consent calendar. I mean, to be honest, every time anybody takes anything off the consent calendar, I hear from my colleague from Ward 8 complaining about, there you go again, you know, there's that consent calendar, it shouldn't have been on, I think there are too many things on the consent calendar. I agree with you on that, but it's a matter of just, are taking the time and trouble to limit what's on the consent calendar? Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater here.
Alderman Arnett.
Alderman Payon, I would suggest if you give the ordinance a little more careful reading, you'll see we're not eliminating the consent calendar, we are limiting the things that go on it, and it still can be something that is a convenience. I, the one thing that I would agree with you, I think we need to take more time, is I think when we're putting, if something is important enough to put it out as legislation, I believe it's important enough to read it publicly. And in fact, first reader is what the name implies. It is the time when we read out the legislation before the public, so they know what's coming down the pipe on our agenda. So I, there's nothing in here that eliminates the consent calendar, it does minimize it. I agree with you there. I also think that if you hearken back to all of our meetings, we have a concoction of activity going on at almost every meeting, where things are being pulled off for the consent calendar, people are confused about what's on and what isn't, and what is the status of it once it's pulled off, and I think if we make these changes, we can eliminate some of that confusion.
I don't think I've ever been confused of what's on and what's not on. I do get confused as the night goes on, and I think some of my colleagues do, too, as to what exactly we're voting on because of different amendments to this and that, but that doesn't have anything to do with the consent calendar, typically.
Alderman Felason, did you have your hand up? Sorry.
That's okay. My question's been answered. Thank you.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick clarification on the order of operation here tonight. When does the motion to suspend the rules need to happen? No?
So we don't need to do that for this? We can go under third reader on this?
Oh, okay.
Why don't we?
Yep, we're, we're just the first part.
Yeah, we have to finish second reader first.
So we've got a motion to amend O-2-21, and we have a second. All those in favor of that, show of hands, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Is that with the amendment?
This is with the amendments, yes. You just voted for the motion to amend O-2-21, except for Alderman Peon. Now, is there a motion to vote on whether the amendments to O-2-21 are substantive? No? Is there a motion to adopt O-2-21 as amended on second reader?
So move.
Second.
We have to vote to suspend the rules?
No.
Not yet.
Why not?
Because, Regina?
Sorry.
Sorry.
You, you took care of it when you approved the agenda for tonight. You already had the votes to add it to the agenda when you approved the agenda to add the legislative section for second readers to add that bill. It was part of the approval of the agenda.
Yeah, I, I don't quite understand that because we can approve the agenda by a non-unanimous vote, but the, the moving to suspend the rules has to be unanimous.
Regina, you want to repeat that? Or Mike?
Basically, when you adopted tonight's agenda, what the first, on number one, at the approval of the agenda, was a motion to add a legislative section to tonight's agenda and second reader action to add O-2. So you, that is automatically placed on the agenda because that motion passed. So it's done.
Buy one, buy one, get one free.
And you also added O-3. So O-3 will be the next legislative action on second reader. You didn't have the section, so you had to add it. And you did, and the bills. You, you got unanimous content on the agenda approval. Nobody said no.
Well, maybe nobody expected that we were in fact, in effect, the way that acted as a waiver of the motion to suspend the rules. Mr. City Attorney, do you agree with that?
No, sir. I agree with Regina.
I'm sorry?
I agree with Regina. You're on second reader, you can pass on second reader, you go to third reader, and you can pass this on third reader after second reader.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt O-2-21 as amended on second reader. All those in favor with a show of hands, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. And Q, is there a motion to adopt O-2-21 on third reader?
So move.
Second.
For second. Madam City Clerk?
Let, let the record reflect that I object to this whole proceeding. We were not even, O-221 was not even identified other than by number when the motion came up. I wasn't aware that it was going to, the sponsors were going to seek to waive the rules or to vote on this tonight. I did hear at our lunch informally that 321 was going to be put up, but I don't remember hearing that 221 was. And I, I think it's, I think it's wrong and I think it's unfair.
Regina?
Alderman, I mean, Alderman Peon, when the mayor read the, number one to the, be added to the agenda, he read the title of the bill into the record.
Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Felason?
Aye.
Alderman Shandermeyer?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Peon?
Hell no.
Okay. Alderman Pendell Charles?
Aye.
That ordinance passes.
Okay, we have just returned our council meetings to what they used to be. Thank everybody for trying what Alderman Savage put forward. And we all gave it a good college try, but it was quite confusing for the public and for some of the council. So thank you for that effort. And Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yeah, th- this is the interesting one. We've got O-30, O-321 for second reader, but according to the city council directives, it was referred to Board of Port Wardens and Environmental Matters Committee and Maritime Advisory Board, and we have not heard back from either, any of those on this. So the council needs to consider whether it's still on those agendas or not. By passing it tonight, you will remove it from those agendas.
I think that is the intention, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I think it's the intention. Yes.
Sounds good. Just wanted to make sure everybody was good.
Thank you.
O-321 for second reader.
So we did, Mr. Mayor?
There's a motion. I'd like to enter a motion to move pursuant to annotated code, general provision, Article 3-305. Regina, sorry.
Actually, we're, we're in the process, we're going to, to vote on O-321 on second reader before we go into the closed session.
Yep. Yeah, we got to finish that vote, Mr. Mayor.
We haven't seen the legislative action. O-3 was adopted at the approval of the agenda.
Is an emotion in order?
Nothing's happened yet. Regina, what would you like? Do we move? Someone needs to move ID 3321?
So move.
Second.
Regina?
Okay. O-321 on second reader was moved by Alderman Arnett and seconded. So now it's time for discussion. If you have any.
So I, it is my legislation, so I can explain the amendments, the changes that are in the ordinance to my colleagues, but it is primarily to make sure that we maintain public access to the harbor line at the waterline. And so there are three amendments, one of which is relatively small, but the first amendment you'll see is on page two, which has to do with adding a, an additional consideration for the port wardens. Barrier Regulation is the title of that part of the code. And it adds that the port wardens need to consider anything that would impede navigable access by the public to the harbor lines from any point of public property or easement area established for the benefit of the public. That includes shoreline notwithstanding developable waterways. The other big amendment appears in the next section of the code. It's section 151630, and it's Port Warden's Development Regulation. And that adds a clause at the end of four parts of that section. And that clause reads, "The port warden shall not approve any application for a license or permit involving placement, erection, or construction of structures and other barriers within the developable waterway areas as defined by this title that would interfere with navigation between the shoreline of any public property or easement area established for the benefit of the public and the harbor lines, either fixed or provisional, as shown by the harbor." That's the Office of Law way of saying, don't block any water access from the shore out to the harbor line. That's the thrust of the ordinance.
So Regina, give me the process here. It's on the floor now. We've got a first and a second. And then we're having a discussion now. Are we moving those amendments? Alderman Arnett?
Those aren't amendments. Those are in the code.
Okay. All right.
Discussion, Alderman Gay?
Yeah, thanks. I'd just like for clarification from my colleague, and I would, one first, like to thank him for introducing this and attending the meetings. And we've become good friends over the last couple of months because we talked for about two hours on the phone every time we get on. And so I, I, I fully support this effort in the fight that, you know, Eastport residents are making. But to clarify, this would not provide public access, correct? This legislation would not do so in the points that we have discussed.
It does not add new access points. No, it's only protecting existing access points. I want to work with you and others, and I believe the mayor. One of the goals that we've set is to open up even more water access points. Some of the things that you and I and the city attorney have talked about are access through gated communities. And that, this does not speak to that. This speaks to, for established water access points, this is saying to the port wardens, it's really, the port wardens know this. This isn't anything that they don't already consider, but it's just saying, be sure not to issue a permit that is going to somehow impede water access through public, not private property, but public access points. And it is important, it includes property and easements. So
So in, in situations where, for example, I'm, I don't, I don't know how technical I can get because we're on the record here and I know there's some stuff going on with the port wardens, obviously, but for, I don't want to say that particular, for, you know, so for, if there is a, an area where, you know, there needs to be a work with the city, obviously, we need to step in and provide some sort of financing to improve the existing area, would this legislation assist, not in the financing or not even in, in the approval of that, but set clear that even though there may be boundaries, this is still public water access? We should still be able to drop a kayak or canoe or whatever, you know, actually, or jump in there if I want to and swim here from this area? Would that, this is with that legislation, is existing us in?
It won't speak to that, but we are speaking to it. One of the preliminary report from the Maritime Task Force, which as you remember, one of its three charges was to look at access to and safety on the water. And that is also something that I think is going to be likely to be incorporated into the next comprehensive plan. And that's where we will, when it comes to us, we're going to express our goal to optimize wherever we can and however we can. And some of that requires funding. As many access points to the water, I can tell you it's exciting because the Undersecretary for Parks and Recs for the Chesapeake region has designated Annapolis as the first accessed opening to the bay. And it'll be part of the city dock development efforts, but also charts that she is showing to the task force committee show all of the different water access points along the creeks of surrounding Annapolis, Back Creek and Spa Creek. And it's all part of the portfolio that she is envisioning to make water access available to visitors. My thrust is also to make water access available to us. We count too. So, but I, it does not do what you're asking me, but I will certainly want to join with you to do legislation that does do that. Or budget.
Yeah, and, and just closing out, Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate that. And I just wanted to get that clarification because I understood that earlier, but I just wanted to clarify for the general public in saying that we still have a long ways to go in the fight for water access, you know? And so, but I, I fully support this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Peon and his hand up, then Alderman Tierney.
Thank you. What's the hurry with this legislation? Somebody, one of my colleagues on the council constantly asks that question every time somebody makes a motion, a motion to waive the, waive the rules and vote on something on the same night.
I'm assuming you're directing that to me and I have two answers. One is that I'm getting a great deal of urgency from my constituents, and I believe I need to be responsive to them. But two, in evaluating this legislation and the clauses, it's either you do or you don't. There's not a lot of, of things that I can see of that are latitude to do it, but Alderman Peon, if you think that this should be deferred, I'm, I'm certainly want to listen to your counsel as to why we should defer this.
Well, I didn't come here knowing that this was going to be, either one of these were going to be heard tonight. My constituents, I would say the same thing about. It's a pretty basic right to follow the procedure. There's a reason why we have them. And unless something is urgent, that time is a factor, I don't understand why we are moving this through simply because you have a majority. Some people would like a lot more of an opportunity to study what's here. Look, I, by and large, am very supportive of what the port, port wardens do. And I suppose that this will be no different ultimately, but I just really, forgive me for feeling like things are being rammed down my throat tonight, but I, I don't see where there's been a motion to suspend the rules, why this is even being considered under the circumstances. I haven't voted to suspend the rules. I voted to put something on the agenda, not to, not to suspend the rules.
This is not a suspension of the rules.
What are we voting on?
We amended the agenda to include a legislative session. Two items were on the legislative session, O-221 and O-321 in legislative session. We've had public hearings on both of them per the process, and now we've had a vote on one and we're under consideration on the second one.
Well, we're waiting to hear back from the port wardens themselves. I thought this was delegated to the port wardens. Wasn't there somebody else it was, it was delegated to also?
You heard the city attorney raise that issue with us, and we recognize that, and we recognize that if this is passed tonight, and that's an if, it's an open question, that it won't go there.
Well, I mean, I think this whole thing, I object, Mr. Mayor, to the whole process. The, we haven't heard from the MAB or the port wardens on it. Maybe you have individually, but it's my understanding they haven't considered this. I have no idea why it's on the legislative agenda for tonight. It was on the public hearing agenda and that's it. I think the, I, I beg to differ with the city attorney's interpretation of what we had here. You can add something to the agenda without suspending the rules and moving forward. And I, I resent the whole thing, both nights. This isn't something where, gee, we're not going to get a grant if we don't approve this or there are meetings that have to take place and we might not get it in time for the fiscal year. I, I don't understand why we voted on the last one and I don't understand why we voted on this one.
So Alderman Peon, there's a port wardens meeting tomorrow night. Alderman Savage?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and yeah, I mean, I think essentially, Alderman Peon, that the, the meeting, the, the vote to modify the agenda was essentially a vote to suspend the rules and since it was unanimous.
It certainly
I mean, well, that, that's what it, that's what it did though, because we added some, we were proposing to add something on the second and third reader.
They never voted to suspend the rules again, I guarantee you.
Well, I mean, in any case, I, I want to just thank the primary sponsors, which, you know, I did sign on to this as well, but the primary sponsors, Alderman Arnett and Alderman Gay, because I do think, I think this is a, it's a great piece of legislation because I mean, the, the whole point of it is to address and repair kind of a weakness that, that we found in the code where the port wardens weren't address and repair kind of a weakness that, that we found in the code where the port wardens weren't really empowered to be able to factor in public water access when making their decisions. And so I think this really takes a proactive approach of, well, you know, no need to argue about it. We just go ahead and change the focus of, of the port wardens and empower them to take a look at this issue, which we all, I think, have stated in one way or another is very important to us, which is the public water access. So thank you. And I intend to support this tonight.
Alderman Tyranny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to thank the sponsor. This has been, this is a very timely issue. And it is, I, it is overdue. And I think I, I appreciate Alderman Gay for, for asking those questions because I think there is some misinterpretation out there. This doesn't actually do anything. It, it is a process ordinance and it expands the review of the port wardens. And so that's really important. But the engineer in me says that this ordinance is only as good as the documentation that it has for backup. And so I just want to take this time to make sure that there is a corresponding effort, you know, by the harbor, harbor master or whoever documents these harbor lines and these lateral lines. Because without good, good information like that, we don't have a leg to stand on as far as weighing, you know, if, if these floating docks, et cetera, are, are obstructions or not. So this is, this is good stuff. So thank you.
Thank you. Alderman?
Just a, a quick comment back to my colleague from Ward One. You said the word harbor lines. That's one of the next things we need to look at. Because they, right now, the existing harbor lines we're using are from 1980. And we need to get those updated. I know that planning and zoning staff are giving heavy consideration to all of Title 15 and I welcome that. And in fact, I've told them, let me know when they're ready because I want to sponsor or co-sponsor that legislation. But harbor lines are woefully out of date and part of this is how do you get from the land out to the harbor lines? So that's next. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gay?
You know, as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking with all that, would it be possible if that, I mean, if we just put everything in a package? You know, maybe water access, I don't know, whatever title it, whatever. But just focusing on all those, all the things that we'd like to see, is that possible? Can it be done in one legislative for temp? Or does it have to be piecemealed over the course of the next five months?
So the harbor lines are generated by an aerial photograph that's taken by a government agency, usually in February of every year. And then the features of the harbor area, including piers and pilings and the channels and so forth are marked out by Sean Wapler, our fantastic G I S person. And she has done that. I'm trying to remember why that was supposed to have been done a couple of years ago. And for some reason, we didn't get to that. So it is not, it will come to us for approval, but it's not legislation. That's just something that the staff do as a matter of course, from time to time to update it. The, the aspect of this harbor line is because it's so out of date, a lot of things are outside of the harbor line. And we'll need to make a policy decision on what we do with those. The inclination has been just grandfather those in and then hold the line on the harbor lines. But it is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a technical process before it gets to legislation.
Even though with the, okay, so outside, just the, the straight up water access. You know, when we were talking in the lunch earlier, whatever, I knew there were some issues and definitions and things like that. And so how do we just say, all right, this is what we as a council have agreed on. We'd like to see public access for water in the city of Annapolis. These are the three areas that we know we can focus on a hundred percent. And so let's just mobilize on that issue and get it done. I mean.
Sorry, you and I have spoken about this and co-sponsoring a resolution that states the policy of the council. Resolutions don't go in code, but they do express the sense of this council in terms of water access. And I'd still be interested in doing that with you or anyone else that's interested. I think in polling and talking to all of you, everybody's fairly much of a like mind that in a maritime city, we want to make water access as possible as we can do it. There are some others more subtle and behind the sorts of scenes like, for example, water access at Hawkins Cove. One of the big issues there is going to be dredging or extending the pier. So those all have to have heavy duty staff work to prepare the issues for us. And those are kind of one by one circumstances and their bodies outside of the city government. M D E comes to mind, D N R is another group. So we have to coordinate all of these things with them. So I'm anxious too, but I think we gotta, we have a process we've got to follow.
Sounds like another task force. I don't know.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on oh, three dash 21. All those in favor with a show of hands, say aye, aye. All those opposed, say no.
Pass.
Okay, so Regina, are we going to third reader here? So, okay. Is there a motion to adopt oh, dash three, dash 21 on third reader?
I'm moved. Second.
Second. Okay. Alderman Peon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to put on the record that I object for the same reasons I did to oh, oh, two dash 21. I object to the entire proceeding. I think it's illegal. I don't think anything we pass, you know, this or the last one is enforceable. And therefore I'm not going to participate in the vote other than to pass.
Thank you. Okay, Regina, please call the roll. Yes?
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Alderman Shandermeyer?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tyranny? Alderman Peon?
Pass.
Alderman Pendell Charles?
Aye.
And that ordinance carries.
Hey, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
That concludes the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
So I have to move on to I D three, three dash 21 in this session. Is that right, Regina? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we just go into the next thing. Mr. City Attorney?
So, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, we're going to the closed session, Mr. Mayor.
So I, I need to entertain a motion. Yeah?
Yes.
Wait a minute. You gotta, excuse me, I'm sorry. You have to officially read the section into the record. On page, on the page.
Yep.
Of your script.
Yep. So this time I need to do a motion pursuant to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to just make sure for the, for the record, it's a business of miscellaneous. I D thirty-three, twenty-one, closed session. In accordance with annotated code three, three, oh, five, B seven, legal consultation.
And you need me to read that in as well, Regina?
No, you can just make your most.
Okay, can we get a motion, please?
I'm moved.
We go into closed session, need a second.
Second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Oh, wait, can I just, can I just say something before we, I just want to say before we lose each other that everybody make sure that they have the link that Takiya sent at six fifty-five for that meeting. There's, there's a special link to get on that meeting.
Good. Please check your emails.
Check your emails. That's all.
Sign off on this one, but you gotta take the vote first.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
Thanks for clarifying that, Alderman Tyranny. Regina?
Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Penlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Shandermeyer?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
After you finish this, then, yeah.
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tyranny?
Aye.
Alderman Peon?
Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles?
Aye.
That motion passes, so you're now in closed session.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
We didn't lose anybody.
Nobody's watching, but we are back live.
I moved the weekend.
That you will read about tomorrow. Okay, before we do that, do we have anything else for good order? I know one thing we have, we have to sing happy birthday to Regina. So, one, two, three.
Oh, God, no.
Okay, before we do that, do we have anything else for good order? I know one thing we have, we have to sing happy birthday to Regina. So, one, two, three.
Oh, God, no.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Regina.
I didn't even know.
Gavin, oh, can I, can I do a good of the order?
Please.
Oh, I just want to shout out, I know she's probably not watching, but somebody from the Capitol might be. But Daniel Oll, in today's paper, I believe, there was a reach out to the Hispanic community. The entire article was in, was in Spanish and you very rarely see that. And I just thought that that was worth mentioning and that's really cool to have that, you know, bilingual in the, in our own city newspaper. So, thank you for that, whoever's listening.
Ultimate gay, I'll give you a five minute call when we get done. Thank you.
Don't pass me in for that.
Yeah.
Rhonda, you, five minutes. I know that's the kettle.
Ross, he get off, they told him. Yeah, hold me to it. We'll report back.
I feel like we're getting close to having some real meetings. So, it will be nice to all be with you guys at McGarvey's, whatever we do. Okay, anything else for good order, please?
I moved it weird jerk.
Can I get a second? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, meeting adjourned.